I want to open the Board of Aldermen meeting for the City of Warrenton. Called the meeting to order on December 4th, 2012. At this time, I'd ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Tallo, if you lead us?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the open and executive session on November 6th, 2012.
Make a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes for November 6th, 2012.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the open and executive session minutes on November 6th, 2012. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Everybody's happy with them? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Next item is the regular board minute, meeting minutes on November 20th, 2012.
Motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from November 20th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the regular board meeting minutes from November 20th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item four is hearing from the public. We always allow this part of the meeting for anybody from the public that wants to come forward, address the board, have any questions or concerns. We ask you to limit yourself to five minutes in time. So, if there is someone, would you please come forward at this time? Hearing from no one, then we're going to move on. Next item on the agenda is Board of Aldermen comments, and we extend the same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If anyone has anything to address or say to the public, do it at this time.
I would like to state that the city did an excellent job. The Downtown Association did a wonderful job, and I can't imagine a more successful Downtown Christmas event as there was this year. Heard no criticisms. Everybody seemed happy, and maybe it was partially due to the weather cooperating, but a truly enjoyable event.
I'll agree with that. It was nice. Thanks to everyone and the WDA for taking part in that. Hopefully in the future, they can add to it as I think they want to. I also have a few things to say. After countless conversations and phone calls regarding the article in the Journal last week, I just would like to say the City of Warrenton is an aldermatic form of government which requires a majority vote of the Board of Aldermen to approve appointments and changes to the municipal laws. This voting process is required by state statutes to ensure the balance of power of the City of Government. Elected officials vote based on their individual opinion and earn this privilege by election of the City residents. I'd also like to thank you, Mrs. Jerry Dyer, for pointing out in the paper how well the balance of work, power works within our city government as shown by the mayor's attempted appointment of Kent Hicks for the IDA board at the last meeting we attended. Our Board of Aldermen take our jobs very seriously and will continue to do so.
Anyone else? Not hearing from many more Aldermen, then we're going to move on to the mayor's report. Couple, first of all, I want to ditto what Alderman Clark and the rest of the board said. I want to thank the staff and the employees of the city for their role in the Downtown Christmas celebration last Friday. I thought it was an excellent event. I think it'll just grow and get bigger and better every year. The organizer, the organizers of the event, the Downtown Association, I thought they did a great job and they let us share and take part in that celebration. I thought it was a great deal, so I was very proud of everyone on that. The other thing I want to take a moment to do, I want to introduce Chris Walz from the Warren County Record. Chris is the new managing editor, I guess, for our area, and we welcome you aboard and welcome, welcome to have you at all Alderman meetings. So, thank you, Chris.
Glad to have you.
I have one more item, actually a couple more items. As one of the mayor's duties, I have the privilege of declaring a mayor's holiday, and I think the city employees will welcome this. So, on Christmas Eve at 12 o'clock noon, all city employees will be dismissed for the holiday to be home with their families and loved ones, with the exception of the Police Department. I know you're not too happy. We'll let you figure some way out something how to handle the officers, so. But, yeah, I think that's, we've done it in the past and will continue that tradition of letting everybody go early that day, so. Next item on the agenda is the special meeting on January 7th. You know, we talked about earlier whether we were going to have a meeting for January, whether we had enough on the agenda. After visiting with Mrs. Thorne, we decided we really need to have a short meeting if nothing else to pay bills. So, we've set the date on January 7th, 2013. Anyone have any issue with that? We probably will move that meeting maybe even to 6 o'clock, and we're not going to keep you here very long. So, if no one has any issues with that, we'll put that on the agenda, so. Next item is item seven, the Recreation Director. And I might make a couple comments on that. We came to the finalists for that position. We started off with some 40 applicants, I believe, that applied for that job. I was impressed with the quality of the applicants. I think Brandy scrubbed the first 40 applicants down to eight. The Personnel Committee called those eight people in for an interview. I was privileged to sit in on some of those interviews, not all of them. They then scrubbed it down to the three finalists. We called the three finalists back in for a final interview, and then the Personnel Committee selected the final applicant. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to employ Dottie Phillips as a Recreational Director on a full-time basis at $58,000 a year, starting December 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to employ Dottie Phillips as a Recreation Director full-time at $58,000 a year with a start date of December 17th, 2012. Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. At this time, I'd ask Alderman Cornell, he's Chairman of the Personnel Committee, if he would introduce Mrs. Phillips.
I would be pleased to introduce Ms. Phillips. Having sat in on the interviews and discussed the interviews, one of the telling things that separated Ms. Phillips from the other applicants was her depth of knowledge. Ms. Phillips comes to us with, I believe, 13 years of previous experience at another municipality. She currently instructs at a local university in the field of recreation management. Her experience spoke for itself, but her, rarely do you see somebody that has been in that field and in that position for such a long time show the enthusiasm and the drive that she exhibited during the interviews. And we kept coming back to the depth of knowledge in that field that she, that she displayed. So, I enthusiastically welcome Dottie Phillips to the City of Warrenton, and Ms. Phillips is here. Thank you.
Would you stand, please, Dottie? And we welcome you aboard, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Do you have any comments that you would like to make to the board or anything?
Sure.
Put you on the spot.
That's okay. Actually, I am just really excited to get here and get started, and Warrenton is, as I've come into town, and I've been out here a few times since my interview, just trying to look around and see where different things are, and just great people, so nice, and I'm really looking forward to getting started. And I think that together with the things you guys already have planned, you're going to see that we can really offer a lot of things to the community that's going to improve quality of life and preserve some natural spaces for the community to enjoy for years to come. So, I'm excited to get started, and I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Next item nine on the agenda is request for, I'm sorry, eight. I wanted to skip that. We've got two people that keep an eye on me, and they watch me closely. Item eight, presentation of audit results, and I think Mr. Alan Schulte is here to present that to us.
I don't quite know how to take that. I'll take it as hurry up and so we can move on. Well, thanks for having me. You guys should have received financial statements probably a couple weeks ago now. The city received an unqualified opinion. That's what you're looking for. Basically, that says that, you know, the statements are fairly presented in our opinion. Gabrielle and her staff do a really great job. We don't make audit adjustments. They show up. Everything is there in order for us, and it's a really nice, probably one of my best audits, really.
Great.
So, so she should get a good pat on the back for that. Her staff's very helpful, so. And I was just going to hit a couple highlights. The financial statements are segregated in kind of two separate statements now. There's what we call a government-wide statement, which is on page 14 and 15. Now, those are going to be all of the city's activities kind of crushed down into one statement, well, two statements in your case, governmental activities and business-type activities. So, business type is going to be water and sewer. Governmental is going to be everything else, so parks and general and all of that stuff. And then, on page 16 and 18 are going to be the fund statements. So, then you're going to see the individual general fund, IDA, those things. So, on a government-wide basis, cash increased about $260,000 in the governmental activities, about $430,000 in water and sewer. And at the same time, liabilities decreased in governmental activities, $260,000, and in water and sewer, $630,000. So, you did a really good job of increasing cash and paying down liabilities at the same time, so you greatly improved your financial position over the last 12 months. General fund expenses exceeded revenues by $127,000 for the year, but fund balance increased $290,000 because of transfers from water and sewer and parks to cover some of the costs that the general fund pays. So, that fund increased fund balance. Parks and Tourism Fund, revenues exceeded expenses by $150,000, so that fund improved as well. The city purchased $225,000 worth of new vehicles during the year, as well as about $200,000 worth of well improvements and equipment purchases on water and sewer. So, you bought some significant fixed assets during the year. You also paid down, and this is water and sewer and general, total $900,000 in debt, so significant principal payments during the year as well. Sales tax increased about $100,000 in 12 compared to 11. Property tax was pretty well flat. Funds and court costs decreased about $100,000. And if you look at, I'll kind of point it out so it's a little easier to see, on page 18, you know, if you look at the general fund expenses for admin, police, street, culture and rec, and planning, expenses increased approximately less than 1%. So, those are the expenses that are kind of reoccurring. The city has a lot of control, more control over, I should say, as opposed to like capital outlays, which kind of fluctuate a lot, you know, and debt's pretty much what it is. So, you guys did a really good job of containing costs in 2012 compared to 2011. Okay? Any questions about the financial statement? The very first part, and I didn't really mention that, and I probably should, the management discussion analysis, starting on page three, that'll give you a lot of comparisons from 2012 to 2011. The only drawback, it mostly focuses on government-wide, so it's going to be very summarized, but there should be some good explanations as to why things changed, and it's kind of intended to be a little more plain language and not as accounting jargon-laden. Questions on any of that? And you should have also received a management report, and this is a pretty standard report. You know, basically says that the city's management's ultimately responsible for the financial statements were strictly in issuing an opinion, and it's a separate letter that you would have received, so it wouldn't be in the actual statement. You know, statements have estimates, things like that. Didn't have any recommendations this year. You know, the internal controls are very good. You guys have a good amount of staff, so you can segregate some duties. You know, we didn't really come across anything this year that we thought would even need to be done to improve them, so you're in good shape there. There's also a couple graphs in there. The first one is general fund revenues, so you can kind of see five-year trends for each group of revenue items. The second graph is general fund expenses, same thing, you can see five-year trends. You can see the one year that probably has the biggest aberration is in 2009. That kind of peach color line seems to be shooting way out of there. That's capital outlays, so that's the addition to City Hall is an expenditure, so that's why that one's such a strange anomaly. And then the last one is water and sewer. You can see five years of revenues and expenses. No, that's probably kind of quick. Do they have any questions or?
The economic climate that we've endured in the last few years isn't going good.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are, you know, adding to fund balance, you're increasing cash, you know, controlling expenses very well, so, yeah, I mean, you guys are definitely in good shape.
There you go. That's good.
We'll thank our staff for that.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Nothing else?
That's it?
Yes, we thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your good news.
Thanks.
Now, I'm going to item nine, sewer credit for 2005 Northwest Street. Kathy Whitty. Did I say your last name correct?
You did.
Good.
And I manage the senior complex over here, Warrenton Apartments, and I've been asked by Mako Management to represent them, hoping that we can get some kind of adjustment due to the fact that we had a leak that I couldn't find. And because of the leak, they're, what they're asking is that we can have an adjustment on possibly the sewer part of the bill because the water was on top of the ground. It took forever to find it, and the plumber that came and fixed it was kind of shocked himself because the pipe just ate through. But it was above enough that it wasn't using this, you know, going with the water, but it took forever for me to find it before the wa, I guess because it was so dry this year, and so by the time it came up on the ground, we were doing some massive jumping here. I didn't get the last paper in here in time, but the August bill goes down to, I believe the, the water says 75, 80 on the last, the August bill. The July bill?
The gallon, you mean?
Right. The July bill was half-fixed, half of the month it was not fixed, and then fixed towards the end of the month. So, the July bill still has partial problems, you know, it hadn't been fixed yet, so that's why the bill hadn't dropped. But the following month, which you don't have, I have right here, drops dramatically. And so, I don't have a figure because I'm not really sure how this would go, but if, what they're wanting is to see if we can get some kind of adjustment due to the fact that it was.
The pipe you have in your hand there, I don't know what that's to. Is that a sprinkler-type thing?
No, no. It goes into the wall, into the back of the wall of the apartment complex.
Of the apartment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does each individual apartment have a separate meter to, are they, or do you furnish the water for all of them?
We furnish the water for everybody.
You know, I'm looking at the water usage here, and I, I mean, I would be alarmed by that.
We were, and I was looking for it.
I know. And you saw no signs of?
I couldn't, I could not see anything. We was walking around all four buildings, and you couldn't, I couldn't hear anything. I was asking everybody, do you guys hear water running? Nobody was hearing anything, or they weren't telling me, and I personally didn't hear it. We went through a big headache of trying to turn the water off and turn it back on, and it, yeah, it was just a real nightmare. It was really bad. So, by the time we found it, this surprised him. He took it, he goes, I've never seen anything like this, so, you know, he was kind of.
And you finally found it because water was surfacing to the tub?
Right. I guess, I assume because it was so dry this year, it took it so long to actually saturate the ground, so, yeah, by the time I found it, the ground was wet.
Was wet.
Is it a village?
Down from them.
You're down from the village?
Yeah, associates, right below them.
Oh, okay.
Right by the railroad tracks.
And your request, you're not disputing the water usage, you're just saying we ran the water out on the ground, we didn't go through the source system, so we'd like an adjustment. Is that, am I reading you right?
That's the, they're hoping for anything we can get because it got so out of control.
Is everybody clear on that, on what?
I'm clear on the request.
On the request, sure. What's been our best experience and protocol on that? Mrs. Thorne, can you shed any information on that?
Well, we do have a sewer credit policy that requires, in order to issue the sewer credit, that one of the city staff be able to verify that the, you know, there's a wet spot on the ground or whatever, that it didn't go through the sewer. Unfortunately, that did not happen in this instance, so I believe when staff was approached with the request for a sewer credit, we couldn't automatically provide a credit because we couldn't follow the protocol that's established. So, the only other alternative is, you know, to come to the board and make that request, but we weren't able to do it through the regular sewer credit channel.
How would you, how would you calculate the, take out that we didn't have staff, staff wasn't notified if we were to give a credit? How would you calculate the amount of credit, or what would be the recommendation?
I'm not sure what the answer to that question would be, simply because part of the time that their utilization was so high was the time that we were in the drought situation. And we do have documentation on at least one occasion where staff went out and there were green plants and green grass at the property. So, I don't know how you would manage to make that calculation not knowing how much was utilized for grass and plants versus how much just ran out onto the ground. I did look at their previous consumption, and a couple of years ago, there were some months where they had some somewhat high consumption up in the $90,000 range, up to $125,000 at one point for a month. So, I'm not sure how you would go about doing that from a fair perspective, honestly.
I was going to ask, do you possibly, I don't know what year you're talking about, it might have been the year that we got the plants because we did water that year more. We did not water this year, so.
I want to say what I saw that was up to the, past $100,000 was 2010 sometime in the summer.
Which is when we got the plant.
Yes.
I did all the landscaping that year.
Any suggestions?
I would suggest that it appears that this was repaired not by you or your own maintenance department, but by a licensed plumber, is that correct?
Absolutely.
I, personally, I would at least entertain, entertain the, for lack of a better term, testimony of the plumber as to where this leak was located, although that is not city staff, the fact that it is an independent contractor, that would at least give me some reassurance that the leak was in fact of the nature that's being described. Not that I believe that you're misleading, but to verify the nature of the leak.
Even if we did see the water on top of the ground, how do we come up with a credit at that time? Is it different then?
Well, generally speaking, when that happens, it's during the month that it's occurring.
You just look at that month?
So, you could take that month's bill versus, you know, the same month, the prior year or the month before. This went on for such a long period of time that it would be difficult to look at a prior month to determine what's appropriate.
Sure did jump up though after May.
What is your average gallons per month?
Well, I would love to be able to tell you that. I do not know that answer.
I mean, that would help me just to figure out.
Yeah, I don't know that answer.
This is a tough one. I don't know.
I have, I mean, I don't know if you, if you guys are able to look at this. I have the last one, which is a huge difference.
I'd appreciate that if you could. Alderman Clark?
September?
Yeah.
Yeah, August 9th through September 13th.
Right.
291,000 gallons. Well, she's talking about the big change from here down.
Oh, yeah.
Look at those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you must have shut everybody's water off.
Limited their showers or something.
Well, I'm for, you know, personally, I can't speak for everyone else, I'm for giving you a credit, just trying to figure out how much.
Is it possible you could have your plumber give us a statement, an affidavit on what he thinks, you know, or what the cause of that was, something to that effect?
I would think so, yeah.
And can you explain to me a little bit about where, I don't, I don't exactly understand where the leak was.
Just below the ground level going into the apartment complex. I don't really know any more than that. He just told me this is not normal.
It's the only place they found it leaking?
It is.
That's right up against the foundation?
Yes, it is.
So, it was going through the drain tile?
It did not go in the apartment.
No, it's on the outside.
Outside drain tile?
You sound like down on the foundation. You sound all like down on the foundation, the drain tile, and probably just-
Oh.
Took it somewhere else.
Probably done that, yeah.
Yeah, which would take it a long time to come up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so you're saying you would, you would consider some form of adjustment? We just need to figure out what that adjustment would be, is that what you're-
Yeah, that's mine, my opinion.
That's a lot of you with that.
That's a lot of Walter.
I'm fine with that. I think the city staff would probably come up with a recommendation.
Alderman Clark? Yeah. Are you all, everyone okay with that?
There's Terry's calls.
That's our, our best scenario, is we're gonna let the city staff decide. We would like that statement from your plumber-
Okay.
If, if he would give us an affidavit that-
Okay.
That's, that's the cause of the leak, and he would verify that to us.
I don't, I don't think-
And we'll let the staff see if we can make some sort of adjustment.
Okay.
Not the water usage itself, but just the sewer part.
Right, right. That's, that's what they told me, so whatever, whatever we can get, I think they would be happy with any kind of a help, you know.
All right. We'll get back to you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
See what we come up with.
I appreciate you.
This one here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I see that part? Yeah, there, the piece.
Terry Thorne, Director of Operations.
Um, my first item for you this evening is the-
Could I, could I have you wait just one minute till we finish up here?
Sure.
So, so this is what you said?
I thought you had blessed those cop.
Would you mind?
No.
Okay. Why don't you leave that with us?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now Terry.
Uh, my first item for you this evening is a request for approval of an agreement with WM Financial Strategies. Um, many of you remember, uh, this company as being Joy Howard, who's worked with us on, uh, other financial issues and financing projects, um, the last of which was our financing for the City Hall edition. Um, we currently have in our budget some major capital improvements to our wastewater treatment plant, um, and we have from our consulting engineer, uh, who has prepared for us the request for qualifications to obtain the preliminary engineering to determine what the recommendation will be, as well as an estimate of what the cost will be, so that we know what kind of, what amount of dollars we're looking for in financing. Um, I'd like to get Joy Howard involved because, uh, if we would pursue state revolving fund financing, we need to make sure that from the onset, all of our documents meet all those requirements to enable us to access state revolving fund financing, which includes all the way up to and including this request for qualifications. Um, one of the things that Ms. Howard said when I initially spoke with her to get this agreement was, um, that one of the things that she would certainly recommend is that we consider, uh, looking for approval from the voters for some bonds to finance the project. It allows, uh, a better rate to be obtained and less cost ultimately to the taxpayer for the improvements, and there is no additional cost for doing it through bonds, but it simply requires voter approval. So her expertise is in making sure that we are obtaining the best possible financing, um, pursuing all the different avenues, including the potential for bonds, um, whether it's state revolving fund, whether it's some other mechanism to obtain the loan. Um, she is an independent, she's not associated with any particular financial group, um, which, for those of you who've been involved with her before, you'll remember, we chose her because she's not affiliated. So what she would recommend to us would be an unqualified opinion unrelated to a specific product of a specific financing institution. So certainly, I think, gives us the best product for a dollar. Um, her cost is estimated, uh, with a maximum fee of three thousand dollars, um, initially to discuss with us the bond referendum, um, educational materials if we would choose, um, ballot language, working with Chris on that, uh, up to and including, uh, whatever other means of financing we would need to look at. If we would choose, um, to go with federal or state funding, so state revolving fund would be one of those, um, there would be an additional two thousand dollars to prepare all of those documents. It's a pretty healthy, uh, application. There's a lot of requirements to meet that. There's a lot of review to make sure that the rates we're charging meet the state revolving fund requirements, so it's pretty, um, detailed and in-depth. And then if we would choose to actually sell revenue bonds to finance the construction of the project, um, there would be a up to ten thousand dollar fee, which includes the bond documents themselves. The only additional cost we would have then in bond financing is we would need legal bond counsel. Um, she's not an attorney, she can do the financial portion, but not the legal portion. We've used Gilmore and Bell in the past on almost all of the bonds that the city's issued over the years, and they've done a good job for us. So that would be an additional cost on top of what she would be doing, should we go that far to actually issue bonds. So my request for you is approval, uh, for this financial agreement, so that we can get started with working on the improvements to determine what we need to do at our wastewater treatment plant, and get some engineers on board who can start to look at that project.
I'd just love to say that we've worked with Joy Howard before on the expansion we did before out there at the treatment plant and on other projects, and she's very professional. She's easy to work with, and she's well qualified to do the job, and I think she's, she's an excellent person in the financial field.
I'd have to agree with you, uh, Alderman Flake. I thought her knowledge was just amazing, and her professionalism is really good. And, you know, we had such a good rapport with her, I mean, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't wanna work with her again.
I'm, I, I don't doubt that the city's had, uh, good luck with, uh, using Ms. Howard, otherwise we wouldn't have this recommendation. My only concern is authorizing this expenditure without a, a comparison, uh, I'm sure there are other-
One of the things-
People providing this service, I don't know what their cost would be.
And, and Alderman Cornell, one of the things we learned when we looked into this a couple of years ago, truly, Joy is unique in her services. When Gilmore and Bell knew that we had Joy on board, they were not excited about it, not in a negative way towards Joy, but she really gives us insight into the financial stuff. A lot of the stuff in the state of Missouri, because bond counsel, you have to have special qualifications in order to do bond counsel, like I for one am not authorized to be bond counsel. Um, it's a prepackaged kind of thing. Like, we could go to Gilmore and Bell, and they would do some type of package, but, and Terry can give you a little bit more as far as the financial aspect of it. We got the bonds on City Hall, a much better deal, and also helped us negotiate with Gilmore and Bell as an independent consultant, using her to not use a package deal in order to basically issue the bonds for City Hall. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I think maybe to better answer your question, if there is another independent financial advisor in the area, I am unaware of who that is. There are many others associated with specific financial institutions, but the product you get from them is, in my opinion, um, related to selling the product offered by the financial institution. She is the only independent, truly unassociated, that I'm aware of.
Does that answer your question?
Certainly means that, I guess, uh, makes her unique in her field.
Their field.
And I, I guess the other issue, uh, by doing this, the timing is, we're in a good position that we need to be looking to the future for our treatment plan, and, uh, we need to have things in order and, and make those expansions before the need is here and we're up and running, ready to go, so. If there's no more questions, I'll, I'll entertain the motion to enter into a gr- an agreement.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake, to authorize the city to enter into a financial advisement, agreement with WM Financial Strategies. I'll ask for roll call vote on that.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
My next item for you this evening is the request for approval of a leave of absence policy. This is related only to permanent part-time. Uh, we currently have, I believe, five permanent part-time positions in the city, and we currently have a leave of absence policy for all of our full-time employees. Um, it became apparent that this is an area we were lacking in because we currently have one of those permanent part-time positions, uh, with a need to go out on a medical leave, um, and we have no policy to allow any type of approved leave, be it medical or otherwise, for our permanent part-times. Um, we base this off of the policy that we currently have for the full times, and it would allow, um, for a, an approved reason, which would require approval by the department head, human resources, and myself, um, a leave of absence generally starting with two calendar weeks, uh, but with the ability to extend it up to six calendar weeks under extreme circumstances. Um, I think that for our permanent part-times that we have out there, they're all very dedicated employees. Um, one of the challenges is always to find good employees for part-time positions, because generally speaking, most employees want full-time, so to find someone willing, uh, and dedicated to part-time hours is somewhat unique. Um, and I would like for us to be able to offer, um, this permanent part-time leave of absence, um, to those employees that meet the criteria for it.
I, uh, I certainly think that we need to make leave time available to all employees, uh, those emergencies come up, whether you're part-time or full-time. The only concern I have is when we start talking about, um, terms like extreme circumstances, uh, evaluated on individual basis, and that'll be determined based on a length of service, reason and length of leave. Those are all so open-ended. Uh, it, it leads me to concern of, as to how this policy could be implemented fairly and consistently. I mean, what, what is, two circumstances, uh, those are both extreme to those employees, but they may not be viewed as extreme by the person making that evaluation. I just, it's very ambiguous to me.
I can tell you that we've actually used this leave of absence policy for full-time employees in the past. I can think of a couple offhand. And the first criteria to be met is at the department head level, and is it a position that the department can continue without? For the part-time positions, that's a pretty easy question, because I don't think there's any of those that I can think of, that the department absolutely couldn't continue to operate. Um, the times that this type of leave of absence have been used have been medical-related, with documented evidence from a physician that there was a need for it, especially any time it would go past the initial two calendar weeks. Um, so my answer to that would be extending it beyond the two calendar week period would require documentation by, at least based upon past experience, a medical professional, whether it be related specifically to the employee or to that group of people that they can also use sick leave for, because we have a sick leave policy that talks about, you know, it's children, it's parents, it's-
Sure.
Those dependent type people. Um, in order to get extension of that, my feeling would be that there has to be something documented, related to something medical, not just the need for an extended vacation.
And I would agree with that, and, and spelled out that way, I would agree. I guess your, this policy is to kind of extend the same protections as FMLA would to a full-time employee. Is that correct?
I, I can't answer that with a yes, because I, I don't believe that it is replacing FMLA for a part-time basis. That was not the way I understood the intention. It simply was to allow some type of leave to be had for those permanent part-time positions. But I, I wouldn't feel good saying it's a replacement for FMLA, because I, I'm, at least the discussions I've had with Brandy and with the department head that have been involved with this in the past, it, it's not, the intent is not a very lengthy extended period of time, but a much shorter duration.
Mr. Durrell, what are your thoughts on how, what this does as far as leaving us open on how, how the policy is applied?
Well, I think it's a very good point that you make, Alderman Cornell, with regards to the ambigu- ambiguity of the language having uniform application with regards to issues for city not uniformly applying it. Um, I guess my opinions are relevant as far as whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, but the, the, yeah, I think there's definitely, could be some issues with the language in there.
And that's my only concern. I think it's a good idea to have a policy in place to offer this to our, to our part-time employees. Again, I understand emergencies come up, whether you're full-time or a part-time. I just want it to be, to make sure that it's a policy that is gonna be enforced, no matter if, if Brandy is sitting in the chair, or her, her future replacement, or whoever it is.
Maybe more specificity as to the criteria, so that there's more guidance for uniform application.
That's the words I was searching for.
So then we need to address not only this policy, but our full-time, because this is exactly the language that's in that policy as well. So maybe we need to bring both of those back next meeting.
My opinion, that's a concern.
Any other concerns or comments?
Let's hope they're looking at us.
Looking at both of them?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think the words, from what I'm hearing, is they wanna look at both of them.
We can certainly do that.
For full-time and part-time, yes. And we have a timeframe to do that?
I hope so. We are a little bit under the gun on this one in particular.
Okay.
But we can certainly do that.
There is currently the need for this, an employee currently needing that.
Yeah, I'd love for you all to approve this to meet the immediate need, and the next meeting will bring back a revision to both policies that Chris is more comfortable with. I'm just in fear that we're gonna get past the immediate situation that's uncontrollable by the employee about-
I, I would have no problems approving that if, if, again, Mr. Durrell, you don't see an issue of approving this and then having a change at a later time?
Yes. And we can even have that for next meeting, but my fear is if we wait two weeks, we may be past the need for this one in particular.
Sure.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Is that, is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay. Motion made by-
I took it as a motion.
Seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the, approval of the permanent part-time employee leave of absence policy. Ask for roll call.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
Thank you for that. Um, and under operational updates, I only have one thing, and actually, Michelle may know something new that I don't know, but I believe our Highway forty-seven lighting project deadline is the end of this week.
It is, actually, um, I just talked to CMT today. Uh, we have fifty working days, and due to some rain days, it's actually been moved just a tad according to MoDOT's LPA manual, so it is fast approaching, and, uh, they have been working this week, and, um, they have the light poles and the acrylic, the globes, but we are waiting on, and I'm gonna-
Drilling.
The beauty rings. But they are made, and they are supposed to be getting powder coated this week, so hopefully they should be, and I'm waiting on a call from our representative.
So then the next couple of weeks, hopefully, that-
What was the deadline on that again?
Well, it was, uh, fifty calendar days, I believe it was, which was the eleventh, but MoDOT specifies in their LPA manual that if it rains more than X amount of hours a day, that, that adds on a day, so I believe it- So I believe it's actually been moved to the 18th according to MODOT.
Of December.
December.
You know, and I've been questioning those guys, too. I think last week I went by there, and I don't think they worked at all last week.
They're waiting on the... They were waiting on the rings for the base of the pole to get them in. There was some kind of delay on those. And so they have the poles that have been in, and the acrylic or the globes have been in, but they've been waiting on what they call the beauty rings, which kind of go to bottom and anchor the poles in a little bit. There was some kind of mix-up with the supplier on those.
Do you think they're going to meet their 18th deadline?
They are hoping to. We are on them.
Is that Warrenton's MODOT shed that's doing that, or...
No, it is actually Reinhold Electric that's doing it, but it's a MODOT grant, so we have to go by MODOT guidelines on the deadline and working days and what they consider working days versus...
It's my intention, Mayor, if they do not meet the deadline, to enforce the penalty.
Okay.
There's been more than enough time in this contract.
What is the penalty?
I believe it's $100 a day, but I'm not 100 percent. But there is a penalty in the contract.
Liquidated damage penalty.
Since you brought that up, and Chief, maybe as they're working, you could... I got some complaints, and I personally... Their lane closure procedures are, at best, confusing. At best confusing. When they're working, if you could just take a gander and see what your take is. I saw a couple older motorists kind of trapped in the cone, the cones. I don't know if they got out. They may still be there trying to figure out how to get through the cones.
Alderman Cornell, define older.
What was the next item on the agenda? Well, I do know when to shut up. And now would be the time.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
We're going to move on to Planning Zoning Director, Jack Kemp. What do you guys think, Jack?
Evening, Mayor and Board. I mainly just want to bring to your attention that ordinance number 2035, approving 180-day moratorium on the enforcement of real estate and banner sign size limitations within the C1, C2, C3, and C4 zoning districts, will expire on December the 16th. We can no longer regulate signs by content, so if you're interested in making a new moratorium, it would have to be based on the sign type. Temporary signs and banner signs cannot be based on, quote, a real estate sign.
So are you wanting to extend this another 180 days, or what's your...
That would be up to you. I just wanted to make sure you is aware that we cannot just renew the existing one because it specifically calls out real estate signs. If you decide to issue another one, it would have to be based on a temporary sign or banner sign.
So the content wouldn't?
Yes, you cannot base it on content.
Counselor?
Of course I do. My concern is, you do a moratorium, the legality of it is supported by the duration in time. How long have we done the moratorium? We've extended it twice before.
Almost two years.
Almost two years. Our ordinance has changed. My suggestion would be to let it expire, and then if a need arises, consider it on an as-needed basis. We're probably getting into the issue of enforceability of the moratorium because it's been extended four, three times. I think it probably would be better to let it expire and see if a need arises.
Okay.
There's no definitive time period, but we're pretty close extending it two years.
So your recommendation, just let this go by the wayside?
And if a need arises, they bring it up to you guys.
Okay.
If they're interested in that time.
Any comments from the board? Done with that?
Okay. Forget with that. We're going to let it expire. Anything else, Jack?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Mr. Gabers, Public Works Director. We're ready for it.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. You got the monthly report in front of you for October. We've been exercising hydrants and flushing hydrants with the valves. We flushed 7,700 feet of monthly footage with the jettet truck. Stormwater and Troy Road's been completed. And we've mounted all the equipment for our snow removal, and everything's operating properly.
Have you got that report? This monthly report?
Yes. It was in the... Just wasn't in your mind for now.
Any questions for Guy?
Guy, I just noticed going down the South Service Road toward the mall down there, right past the hideout establishment there on the south side of the road, there's been a lot of leaves blowing out into the gutter. And that's going to stop them grates up severely because they're deep. I mean, they blew them out in the gutter. I don't know what the reason for that was, but we might send the truck down there to check that out.
Take care of it.
In that same note, you know that sewer on the backside of Lake Chateau that's real shallow and it fills up with leaves?
All the way at the end?
Yeah. You're still having somebody check that?
They should be checking it when they pick up the leaves.
It was full the other day. Like I said, it's not very deep, so it doesn't take long to do that.
Okay. I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
What else you got, Guy?
Next item is a single-axle dump truck. It's under state contract for $97,856. We budgeted $98,000. Approval of that.
And this is an additional vehicle? We're not getting rid of anything?
That's correct.
Guy, I have to say, I would compare you compared to the chief or Brad. You're like my 12-year-old daughter compared to my eight- and four-year-old. Your Christmas presents always cost a lot more. I mean, when you request something, you're going for the gold.
Well, it helps because it's under state contract, so...
This is the one?
Yes, sir.
But I believe, to be fair, he's been trying to get this truck for two or three years now.
You didn't get a wish book this year.
Are we in order?
They got it backwards, aren't they?
That's right. What was the amount of that truck again?
I am under budget.
I'm making a motion to have a go with recommendations, Public Works Director.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall to take the recommendation
of the Public Works Director in purchasing the state-contract truck in an amount of Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the Public Works Director recommendation on the salt spreader for a single-axle dump truck in an amount of $10,543. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you. Next item is Christmas tree recycle. We've always took them up the top of a hill at Coleman Road, and then the residents of the city dropped them up there, and then we transported them to the wastewater treatment plant for grinding. We want to continue doing that. And do we want this for the city or for Warren County?
You want to continue on with it?
Yes, that works out really.
Did you say you're proposing or just asking?
Just asking if that's what we want to continue to do.
For... Did you say for the county?
For the city and the county.
What's the alternative? Would you rather they take them out to the waste treatment facility?
No, I prefer them off of Coleman Road.
Off of Coleman Road. That's what I prefer, too, then. If you're happy with that, I'm happy.
If you allow county residents to do it, what kind of additional volume or cost do you think you...
We had about 50 trees last year was the total.
Just from the city?
Just from the city.
So it's not a big issue.
No, but I thought he was asking if we should open it up to the county.
To the county.
To the county.
That's just an option.
I don't have any problems with that if you think that you can handle it and not incur a...
But remember, you have to have these ground. You have to pay the grinder to come and...
To come and grind them up. And then we let the residents have the mulch?
We did last year.
Last year.
The reason the question arose is because the recycling center asked the question.
Oh.
Because they were going to, I believe, set up something for the county unless it was going to be here also. So they were just trying to get an answer.
How much do they... What do they charge for grinding? I mean, does they just come out and there's so much for a day to do it, or...
That's correct. And I believe it was 30... I'm not going to say.
So it's just it costs... If we did 50 trees or 100 trees, it's no difference?
It's still a day set up and grinding.
But we don't have them come out just to grind the Christmas trees. They come once a year and grind everything out there at the plant.
What, do the recycle center want our trees, too?
I don't know.
They might want our brush, too. Them's and stuff like that.
I'm willing to give it to them.
We got to pay for them coming to grind a brush and grind a Christmas tree.
Grind everything up.
I think we're fine with that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Guy?
That's all I have.
You tell them the good news about the sewer main became unclogged today? That was good news for the public?
Yeah, that was... We had a sewer issue.
That could have been a major, major problem, though. Yeah, I was glad to hear that.
Phil, send it.
Is that a coke? You don't want the main stopped up?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm ready. Move on to Michelle Slinter, Economic Development Director. And Michelle, I'm going to ask you to speak louder because I'm not hearing you too well. So I have trouble hearing your voice. You've got such a soft voice.
That's not what my husband says.
Well, use that voice on us.
Good evening. The first thing I have for you tonight is my economic development update, which is in the packet for you, if there's any questions on that.
How's that working out? Are you getting... Are they allowing you input? Are we hoping they are?
I'm sorry?
Are they allowing you input? You want me to talk like your husband?
It's the Warren County Economic Development Group?
Yeah.
Yes, I go to all the meetings. I get to participate in the meetings, give comments. When Josh receive... If I receive something that does not work for the city, but it may work in the county or somewhere else, I then forward it on to him if we get something that comes directly to me that he is not aware of. And if he gets something that I have not received, he forwards it to me. And so we work back and forth with getting different locations that he may not be aware of so that we can make sure that we have all the locations together and getting everything that we need.
You're getting the cooperation that we're hoping you were going to get on both sides. Good. That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
And I'll try to continue to give you guys an update of the sort of what we've discussed at the meetings so that you guys are aware of what's happening.
Sure. Thank you. Good. Very, very good information. Thank you.
Any questions from Michelle on that issue?
The next item on the agenda, then, that I have for you is approval to apply for Missouri DNR Playground Scrap Tire Material Grant. We apply for a grant from the... Not DNR, but another group to receive... Recycling to receive scrap tires. And we put them out at Quarry and the Athletic Complex... No, I'm sorry, Dyer Park and the Athletic Complex. And we've replaced the mulch that we had there, the shredder tires, to make it softer for the children and increase their fall height. And we are asking approval to apply for grant to replace the Pete Revel and the...
Quarry.
Quarry and Binkley Woods Park.
Any questions on that? And we replace it all with the tire mulch. My only complaint with the tire mulch is those little tots wear their socks in there and they turn black. Gets to be a problem at my house once in a while.
Like you do the laundry, right?
Or check with my wife.
Sorry, Mayor.
I need a motion to approve for the Missouri DNR Playground Scrap Tire Material Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve to apply the Missouri DNR Playground Scrap Tire Material Grant. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And the last item I have on the agenda for you this evening is to apply for Tree City USA designation. We've done that in the past two years. And in doing so, we have to state that the city spends X amount of dollars per resident taking care and maintaining our trees. This year could be a little tricky with the drought, but we're going to see if we can apply for this again this year.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Make a motion to approve, Michelle, to apply for the Tree City USA Designation Grant?
Just the designation, but it does... If we receive that, then it allows us to get additional funding and other grants.
To get the grant.
Okay.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo to apply for the Tree City USA Designation. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Anything else?
That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Now, item 14, Melody, City Clerk.
First item I have is approval for the GIS consulting services for the cemetery map. What this is, is I had requested qualifications to develop a GIS-based cemetery map that would reflect the city's current paper maps that we have. And the GIS map would be compatible with the Summit city cemetery software, so that way it would automatically update when any information is entered into the Summit system.
Is there a cost on this?
We have this set up in the capital expenditures for, I believe, $6,400. This is the qualifications, though, of who would be qualified to do the work actually on that type of project. This does not even include any type of... There are bids to us to actually do the work. This is just who would be qualified to do the work.
I'll make a motion that we approve the GIS consulting services for our cemetery map.
I have the bid tabs for the catering. And the recommendation is to go with Splendid Catering for the low bid.
And they are local, correct?
Yes, sir, they are.
That we had last year.
Yes, sir, we did.
That was very good.
Need a motion for approval on the catering bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the catering bid for the awards banquet on January 12th to Splendid Catering in the amount of $1,595. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
And Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
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 Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
The next item I have for you, the awards banquet's coming up. It'll be January 12th, 2013. I have the bid tabs for the catering. And the recommendation is to go with Splendid Catering for the low bid.
And they are local, correct?
Yes, sir, they are.
That we had last year.
Yes, sir, we did.
That was very good.
Need a motion for approval on the catering bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the catering bid for the awards banquet on January 12th to Splendid Catering in the amount of $1,595. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
And Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
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 Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
And Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
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 Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay. I'm going to move on to Gabriel Curry, Finance Manager.
All right, the first item I have is the claims report. I have a question approval to pay the invoices. I'm starting here, totaling $156,422 in bills.
Any questions or comments on the account table?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to pay the bills in the amount of $156,422 in bills. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
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 Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, Mr. Boots Cruz.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. Tonight, I have the bid tabs for the East Side Electrical Switch Gear. The low bid was Butler Supply for $2,801.42.
You might tell me what East Side Electrical Switch Gear is?
The, it's the East Side out at the Athletic Complex. We have the, a couple months ago, we put the conduit in. Ameren UE, or, yeah, Ameren UE is going to come build the line across the, to the parking lot. We put the conduit in from where the new restroom facility is going to be. Well, we got to get the, from the transformer to the switch gear, and then from the switch gear to the building. But in order for them to set the transformer, excuse me for my voice, to set the transformer, I have to have the switch gear in for them to hook it up to. So that's what we're doing. We're just kind of a piece at a time is what we're, as it progresses.
Do we have a motion if there's no other questions on that?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Tallo to approve the East Side Electrical Switch Gear bid from Butler Supply in the amount of $2,801.42. Roll call, please.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Alderman Blake?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
The audit report was outstanding. That makes your department look better since you're responsible for keeping all those numbers together for us. We thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Good point, Mayor. Good point. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Boots Cruz.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. Tonight, I have the bid tabs for the East Side Electrical Switch Gear. The low bid was Butler Supply for $2,801.42.
You might tell me what East Side Electrical Switch Gear is?
The, it's the East Side out at the Athletic Complex.